I'd like to lead us to the head of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it spans one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we near?
I don't see the light time.
I don't see the kids out there.
Roll call on the board.
Trustee Giesmer.
Here. Brown.
Trustee Erthler.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Kabinski.
Here.
Supervisor Tusher.
Here.
Let the record not forthwhile in attendance.
Go here and board your approval minute list, December 8, 2015, Board meeting.
Oh.
Go ahead, your second.
My second.
Questions concerned?
On page two, if Leanne, if you could just make the correction, under Old Business A, the beginning of the third line, the CZ got backwards there in my last name.
The what?
My name is misspelled. Third line, under A, Old Business.
You said one and two was a misspelled?
That'd be funny, John. See it?
Okay.
I see it.
But Leanne, you see it. It's at the beginning, very beginning of the line.
The G and the G. Any other questions?
Under A, did you say or B?
Under A.
A.
Third line.
Her name on the third line.
First word on the third line.
Oh, I see it now. Of course, after it's printed.
A little dyslexia.
Yeah. Sorry.
Any other questions or concerns or questions?
I'll make the motion, prove us corrected.
Go ahead, your second.
My second.
Roll call.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Giesmer.
Yes.
Trustee Erthler.
Yes.
Trustee Kabinski.
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Communications.
I have none.
That's another wonderful. And it was about the up and coming, uh... Put it in your box today. Silent auction. There it is.
Oh. Tuesday. It says October thirteenth? No. October fifteenth. A silent auction that I don't know if I registered a bit on your favorite site. Click here.
Yeah. If anybody wants it, I can forward it out to you.
Oh, it's from Age Options Organization. Age Options.
Okay.
Okay. Any visitors remarks? Hearing none. No visitors. Supervisors report. No report. Trustee's report.
Yes. I'd like to say that Mary Robb and Leanne did an excellent job with the North Riverside Chili Cookout. The chili was delicious and I think it was the best. The space that we had was decorated very nice. And, oh, and they displayed the township banner in front of the desk and it all went very well. And in addition, the chili group took some outstanding photos.
That's only because there's a picture of you.
I planned to order a dozen of these eight by tens.
You're autographing, right, Wayne?
Anyway, I did that for a laugh.
Are you through?
Yeah.
I appreciate what you're saying, Wayne, but it was really on Leanne. She decorated, she made the chili and...
It was all of us and...
Well, I think, I think they did so well, we should have them do it again next year.
Leanne definitely, I can make the chili, but Leanne has to do the decorating. I'm not good at that. But it was, the three of us had a really great time.
We had a really nice evening.
We had a nice time.
Wayne, you didn't give yourself enough place.
They had a wonderful...
We would have done it without you. We had a good time.
Well, I thank you.
And even though it rained.
Oh.
It was terrible.
It was really crowded. I couldn't believe the number of people that were there.
Well, didn't the paint per se was the best attended?
It could have been. The fireworks were spectacular.
I heard they pushed up the fireworks an hour.
They did. They did an hour because I think there was...
Sorry, I didn't know. I didn't think anybody was going to be...
I was out of town or I would have come because I have enjoyed those.
Okay.
It was really very nice.
Well done.
Well done.
Thank you, Wayne.
One more before we read the board.
Wait, wait. I'm still a trustee.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
I just want to say, because it's not on our agenda, that there'll be a speakers event on Sunday, January 24th at 3:00.
When?
Sunday, January 24th, 2016. And I have a historian from the Lincoln Library coming. And then there'll be, there might be a few other people that wrote. They ask different people to write 292 words essay on any topic, which is the same amount of words as in the Gettysburg Address. And there might be a few essayists here.
Well, get that flyer to us. Get the flyer so we can put it out on the desk, the bulletin board.
Newsletter.
Well, it's not until January 24th.
Well, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Got to.
Okay.
You can talk to Andrew, can try to get it into the winter one.
Okay.
Newsletter.
Okay.
But I mean, you can't wait.
Too long.
Right.
Right. And so...
Get ahold of Andrew to make sure, you know, about the newsletter.
Okay. I will do that. And at our next meeting, we'll have a budget. I'll have a budget for that. That we can approve.
So call in your town and put the budget for that on the agenda.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anybody else? Men in the House Boarding Board.
We are still looking. I have talked to two people who had, you know, I thought would be good candidates and said they weren't interested. I have someone else that I'm talking to right now and...
People might not want to get involved.
We really need somebody.
I know.
It's been like two years now.
It can't be, you know, a genie in a bottle and make them, you know, appear before us. I mean, you know, I know you're complaining, you're the board complaining, but you know...
Would it be bad, bad if you talked to someone like Joe Innig was? Is that out? He's North Riverside.
Yes, he is.
Yeah. I think, I think we did, I think we turned it down.
Oh, okay.
A while back.
Okay.
So you want this person to be from North Riverside?
Well, as Rich has said recently, at this point, since we're having so much difficulty anywhere in the township.
In the township. It has to be in the township. But you know, ideally, it would, would be nice from somebody from North Riverside. But at this point, it's been two years?
It's about almost two years.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's the potential for us losing another person there, so...
So you may not even have a warrant.
Well, it's getting, you know, it's getting tough to miss a meeting. And you know, there are times when people are sick or they're traveling or whatever and you might not necessarily be able to leave every meeting. So we really need to get someone.
If you could relay the message to the Mental Health Board, you know, I, you know, we did not know about this event with Richard Check. You know, it was put on by...
Second.
Oh. That would, it would have been nice if the Mental Health Board would have let us know because I'm sure there would have been more than myself that would have thought a case about going to it. You know what I mean? You know, especially since, you know, if it's somebody from the township, you know, and Richard Check, you know. I felt bad when I read this because I would have liked to have gone just to support and show our gratitude from the township. I know you were there and Steve were there. Steve really isn't, you know, elected official or anything. You...
But he supports the Mental Health Board a lot. He has the past, so I don't think...
Well, that's for the Mental Health Board and you. I mean, you know, but he's not on the Mental Health Board.
No.
So I mean, you know, it would have been nice if somebody, you know, at least on this board chose to know. So if you can let us know to pass the time.
Yeah. They were looking for, it was, and I'm sure that probably wouldn't be a problem inviting someone from the township. But they were looking for representatives from their supporters. And the Mental Health Board is the supporter that they were...
Well, so is the township.
Yeah. I mean, I guess indirectly, I mean, it all funnels through the township, but...
Yeah. Okay. And anything else about the Mental Health Board here? Okay.
We're going to be working on our levy, I know, coming up because, you know, it's getting to be that time of the year.
Yeah.
So I guess with us, we should be estimating our levy next month.
Yeah.
Because it has to be adopted and filed in December.
Okay. Under Old Business. Uh, drawing a plaque for Judy Barca Pinca. You know, our decision tonight is the cost, the size, and the placement. You know, there is, you know, we've, you have got the brochures.
I've got the cost.
Oh, did you, we haven't decided what size, so...
Well, we talked about a 24 by 14.
Okay.
And there is three things that we can do. We can have a sculptured face, an image face, or an etched bronze face. The most expensive is a cast brown with a sculpture face, which is $3,956. I have one of these.
Okay. You know... Can I, if I said, I think I'm going to echo what you had said earlier. I think we should table this whole thing until this family feud between Joe Senior and Joe Junior is resolved. Getting us in, in the middle of their family feud here because he doesn't want us to pink a name on anything.
Right. Okay. You know, that's on the number two, John.
I'm sorry?
That's on the number two, so hold on.
Okay.
Okay. So we can all look this over. Now, number two is ex-husband request to pink a name, not be, name to be dropped from the plaque or anything that we have. That's from Senior. Joe Senior. I forward this out to Joe Junior. He's there going into, you know, the fights that, you know, they've had, you know, within the family. And I told him, I don't want to get involved in your, your family business.
Right.
And it is the township. I called our attorney and talked to our attorney today and off the top of his head, but, you know, he's still got to look into it. You know, there should be no reason why to pink a name shouldn't be used. Because it's been used for so many years. You know, he said, you know, facetiously, are they going to sue the Chicago Tribune for using her name all the years too? I mean, you know. So he, he had said that there, he remembers five, six years ago, something coming up and he's going to look it up and then he'll get back to me.
Okay.
On a decision.
Well, I know, so the husband just wrote a letter or an email.
He emailed, it's in your packet.
Oh, he did email it and ask us not to use it. So it's just a request.
As far as I can tell.
That we can either...
But I forward that email to your attorney.
Okay.
Just, you know, to cover our butts so we don't get...
Right.
Caught in any type of baloney.
But I believe, I believe you did the right thing. But now, with all that's going on here, the attorney is going to charge us for this. And this is township taxpayer dollars paying for this family feud between the Dupincas.
Well, it's, it's not, I mean, it is a feud between them, but it's...
But we don't know what he can do.
You know, and that's what our attorney has to advise us.
Exactly. And that's why we had to go to them, to protect our backs.
Right. Exactly. But I think it would be weird to put Judy Bar on there.
Absolutely.
And actually, we didn't vote on Judy Bar. We voted on Judy Bar Dupinca.
My, my feeling is if we, if it comes down to having a plaque that says Judy Bar, we table the whole thing and forget it.
I...
People don't know where it's Judy Bar.
We don't know, they don't know where it's Judy Bar. No, I know that Pepe, the son, has said he owns the rights to the Judy Bar Dupinca name. Whether that means, you know, but he knows we were doing this plaque. So I don't know if that has any bearing on this or not.
But I'm going to wait to hear from the attorney and then I'll forward everybody, the attorneys, and also Joe Junior and Joe Senior from what I...
Does Junior know that this email came from his father?
Yes.
Okay. Now, he's an attorney too, right?
Yeah.
And he claims he has the rights to her name. Why doesn't, why doesn't he just tell his father, I got the rights to this name? Why are we getting involved in this?
Because his father requested that we don't use her name.
But he has the rights, the son has the rights to the name.
I have no idea.
Okay. See, that's the problem. We're getting the middle of all this and we shouldn't be there.
Okay. We will table the plaque until further notice.
I was so hoping to get this done so we could put it up on the day that she died.
Well, I just can't wait to listen.
Well, she, you know, she passed away on December 10th and I...
I can't hear you.
She, Judy passed away on December 10th. So I was hoping we could get the plaque and have the ceremony that day of hanging it.
Not going to happen.
But it's not going to happen.
It's not going to happen. Okay.
Okay. Under the...
The one and two are both tabled until further notice, right?
Right. Annual Toy Conference, November 8th. Advanced deadline, October 23rd. I'll kind of sign up, but some things have come up where I may have to cancel. So I may not be going. Unfortunately. Looking forward to it. For a time in a long time. So fill the stuff out, get it to Marge. Okay?
I already sent it in.
Pardon me?
I've already sent this in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Let Marge know that you sent it in.
All right.
Anne, did you do anything?
Yeah, I'm reserved.
Okay. Let Marge know you sent it in so we know.
Well, she sent it in for me.
Oh, okay.
But if, if you think you're not going, then you ought to try to at least get some of your money back.
Yeah, well, it's October 25th is the deadline, so I should be able to get money back.
I think there's a scale all the time.
Okay.
You know, depending on when you cancel.
I will do it tomorrow then, you know.
Unless somebody else can take your reservation.
Well, I don't have my money in yet.
Well, if, maybe you can...
See, now, I, I reserve a hotel, that's a smoking hotel.
Okay.
That is, they had given me a list of smoking hotels.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know...
All right. I'll just send my money in.
Well, talk to Marge. Well, okay.
Or I can talk to Marge tomorrow.
Yeah. I'll let Marge know first that I, something came up this afternoon where I, I got big expenses going out and time noise, you know. It hurts. Okay. See, ratify payment to Riverside Art Center. Go ahead, your motion.
I'll make a motion, grant payment Riverside Art Center.
Well, the grant was already paid out.
Right.
It's ratified, you know, the action.
Ratify the grant.
Ratify the action.
Action. Okay.
Go ahead, your second.
Eighty-two fifty.
My second.
They seem to be doing all right. They had a net income of almost about 10,000 bucks.
Yeah, they're getting good promoting, good publicity now.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Did we vote on that? Did we vote?
We didn't vote.
Roll. Oh, okay.
Roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Erthler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesmer?
Yes.
Trustee Kabinski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Did we vote on the auditorium plaque? I can't remember.
No, we did not. We tabled it.
We tabled it.
Okay. All in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
Until further notice?
Aye.
Any objections? There are none. Okay. Seda was supposed to be here tonight. They're not here. Seda, you know, they heal lots in Cicero, in Chicago. I used to get emails from Seda about jobs. I haven't had that. But there were two when they stopped, when they called and talked to them, they said, no, they, they stopped doing that.
Well, what's the benefit of getting a new estimate of the market value of this building?
Well, will you wait till I get to that?
Pardon me?
Wait till I get to that, wait? So that's Seda. Okay. Update appraisal of Town Hall.
Well, wait a minute. Now, what does Seda, how could they benefit the township? Or could they? Or are they too far east?
Well, no, they, they could benefit the township and that's what they were going to be here telling us tonight, but they're not.
Oh. So they'll presumably call and reschedule?
I guess. Unless they show up later on.
Okay.
This may be them now. Who knows?
No, these look like radio players.
Okay. Any other questions concerned about Seda? Okay. Update appraisal of Town Hall. That's the building. Tomahay requested because it has been done since 2009. They want an updated version of the appraisal of the, um, the building, Wayne. To answer your question.
To improve, to increase the premium? Is that the idea?
No, I don't know. They just want an updated appraisal of it.
Appraisal, appraisal, I understood.
Well, they just want to be sure that they're insuring us for the proper amount.
Right.
If the building is worth more, then they should be insuring us for more.
If it's less?
It's less, then less.
It, in my view, this building is nowhere near $4 billion. What do you say?
Well, I don't know. Does the landmark status increase the value at all? Is it because it has landmark status?
I don't know. But we couldn't sell this building for anything like that.
I don't doubt that you're correct on a way, but I don't, I don't know what it, what it's worth.
Anyway, I don't know.
It's a landmark.
I mean, if I'm an industrial appraiser, I don't know how they do it. All I know is that Tomah wants an updated donation.
I understand.
You could very well be, you could very well be right, Wayne.
Yeah.
Especially in this housing market.
Right.
But they're not asking to sell. They're asking what it would cost to replace it.
Right.
Which is the four million, right? That's what the reproduction costs.
Right.
I see Wayne's point. Though if you appraise it at four million, can you sell it at four million, right?
Yeah. But to replace it, it would cost probably...
It would cost four million, yeah.
I mean, if there's a house that's going for a million, million and a half around here, and that's just a house.
But we wouldn't build it. No one would build a new building like this.
No.
No. That's why.
You're putting...
Too much wasted space in this building.
But then you never know. You may get a handyman who wants to turn it into condos.
Right. Okay.
There's an awful lot more plumbing to put in. Okay.
Go ahead, your motion.
To do what? Do what?
Were you going to hire Benson again?
Hire industrial appraisal at $250 to update the appraisal of the Town Hall.
I make a motion, we...
Two fifty-five.
We hire Industrial Appraisal to reappraise at the cost of $255.
Second motion.
Updated.
Okay. Updated.
Second motion.
Any questions concerned?
Well, yeah. Because Industrial Appraisal was the company that did the assets. They went through and remember, well, into this letter, it was updated.
Yeah.
But that was just the assets, like what?
But they also did an appraisal on the building years ago.
Benson did it.
Oh, okay.
Benson, C.A. Benson from La Grange. Now, we don't know offhand what they charged us. We'd have to go back and look. But there was nothing in here that I saw. This was his report.
So this $255 is just for equipment?
Yeah. That was the assets, the furniture, the equipment, and all of that that they did. And I have a question about that too because it looks like they said in this letter in April, where was the sentence? Well, let's settle Benson first because this is a different, slightly different issue.
Okay. You want to recall Benson then?
Yeah. Either them or some other company that can do the appraisal.
So we're not voting on this?
Well, we don't know how much it would be. I mean, they want the appraisal soon as possible. I don't know, so that we have the proper value and file for your building. I mean, I don't know if there's a particular rush on this, but Tomah would like it.
No, that's a motion on the floor and been seconded. Are we going ahead with that or no?
Nobody seconded.
I did.
I thought Wayne made it.
Made motion, I seconded it.
And then you're under comments, discussion, and that's when I brought this up.
Exactly.
Yeah. There is a motion on the floor.
So is the motion taken off the table?
I don't know. Are we, do we want to act on this? I seconded the motion that Wayne made.
Yeah. I'd like to see if we're going to pass it.
All...
What the motion was to hire an industrial appraisal company.
Right. Yes.
But you don't know that they would be able to appraise the value of the building.
That's why I'm asking. What do you want to do with this motion? I'm not pushing anything.
I take this motion, vote, and people who want it, vote for. People who don't, don't vote.
So there's $255 is just to appraise the stuff inside the building?
Yeah. Yeah. That's what they...
What do you think?
Okay. Okay, we're done.
Okay.
Torma wants the building appraised.
Okay, well, let's vote on this.
I don't know why, okay, let's vote.
But what are we voting for, we're voting?
For the property.
For the property, the internal property of the building.
The internal property.
Right.
Okay, so we're voting for the two hundred and fifty dollars for them to.
Two hundred and fifty-five dollars, which is.
Sure.
And we just had that done.
We just had that done.
We don't need it done.
Well, what happened here, you guys read this letter, it says, uh, we are requesting, this was April this year. We are requesting that any building changes or improvements be recorded. See, they wrote to us and said, as well as any permanent fixture and equipment, acquisitions, deletions, or transfers. Please note, we have provided you with reporting forms. We do ask that you utilize one sheet, also services, um, where does it say, there's. Hold on a second.
Well, Torma doesn't want that, anyway.
No.
This form should only be completed if you do not anticipate uh, submitting any changes this year.
All right, we're looking at it.
I presume there were no changes submitted in April to the furniture, equipment, et cetera. I would question whether there should have been, because I know we bought that stuff for the equipment for, that, um, radio players uses. So there is some new equipment here, I don't know if it was reported to them, I assume not, because they're saying they haven't received any changes as of April. So, I think that perhaps there needs to be an updating of this report.
Okay.
By the township, not by them coming out, but by the township just completing the necessary paperwork.
All right, then let's vote on this, but you're saying that we don't need this?
No, we do need this, we need the building appraised, because that's what Torma wants.
We're talking about a, a.
We're talking about two different things that are.
I'm talking about the motion on the floor.
The motion's not made.
Okay, now let's vote on the motion on the floor.
Right.
Could we have put a motion on the floor, is it?
Yeah, let's vote on that.
Okay, there was a motion by Giesman to hire industrial appraisal company at the cost of two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Right.
To.
To.
Reevaluate.
Reevaluate property, internal property.
Internal property.
And we don't need that. I made a mistake, so let's vote accordingly.
So then you can withdraw your motion.
I seconded it, though.
Right.
So it's on the floor, so you have to hold on to it.
Right, let's vote.
But he can still withdraw.
I don't understand, I, I'm not familiar with that, how you can withdraw a motion that's been seconded, I don't, I don't understand that.
All we have to do is vote against it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Ertler?
No.
Trustee Clark?
No.
Trustee Giesman?
No.
Trustee Kabitski?
No.
Supervisor Tusher?
No.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Now, do I hear a motion to hire, um, C.A. Benson and Associates to do an update on the building itself?
Do we have a cost?
I was just gonna ask that.
No, do.
Oh, wait a minute, the valuation, base cost is two ten.
Well, remember, this was done in, this letter is from two thousand.
Right.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm asking for an up, update, I'm not saying putting in prices, just to have them, talk to them to update it. Is that what the board wants?
Well, I think it needs to be updated.
We need to know how much it's gonna cost.
Right, exactly, exactly.
I think we oughta learn what it's gonna cost before we decide.
And then this industrial appraisal is basically tabled?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. You do not like industrial.
So we should table the, um.
Benson, but.
Benson thing until we get a cost.
Right.
Then we can put it back on the agenda, then.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Going back to industrial appraisal, I think what we should do is, see, think back a year from when they did their last appraisal, or gave us the last report, see if there's anything that needs to be updated on that report, so that they have a listing, we have a listing.
Well, no.
Of all of the equipment, furniture. Right, but does this include, um, everything that we own? As far as, you know, telephone system, we just, we changed the telephone system this year, didn't we? We went to, um.
No, that was two, three years ago, we changed.
We changed, I think we changed our, um.
Provider.
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 The internet provider.
Um, we, I know we bought that, uh, equipment that the.
Radio player's.
Radio players use. I, I just don't know if, uh, if this report was done in two thousand thirteen, I believe there have been some, should have been some changes since then.
Didn't we buy a bunch of chairs for the auditorium?
No, not just two thirteen, no.
I thought we did.
I thought we bought.
No, we've been.
Well, that's two and a half, two, more than two years ago.
Yeah.
Because that was February of two thirteen. I think we need to, to think about, you know, go through this and think about what we've done.
So we'll put all this on next floor.
And, and what properties have been devalued also? That aren't worth as much as they were a few years back. I forgot the accounting terms of that.
Personal property, building. They don't have that on here. This is appraisal date is of, um, February twentieth, two thousand thirteen.
Right.
Yeah. Accounting date is of three, one, fourteen.
And unless, after you received this letter, and prior to the end of May, you were in touch with them to report anything, any changes. And that, I don't know, I mean, we don't know. But, uh, we need to know that, I mean, we need to check and see if there's anything that should be included in this report. Because as it's stated in here, it is important, keep your, keeping your appraisal records current is extremely important. Summary and supporting details are among the most valuable documents in your possession, if you have a loss, what if there was a fire here or something? God forbid.
So that's why.
You know, you need to know what you have and how much it's valued, yeah.
Right, we read on that already.
Why people take pictures of things and, you know, anyway, I'm upset.
Okay, okay. Um, uh, Lions Club annual dues for me, it was due, deadline was April one. Okay, I was on vacation, it might have gotten lost, maybe they didn't get it to me, but now they've been harassing me.
How much was it?
Fifty dollars.
How much?
Eighty.
Eighty bucks?
Yeah.
But, you know, um, if you wanna do this, which I'm fine with it, but if you don't, I'm also fine with that, I think it's up to you. Because this membership is only for you. I am a active member of the Lions Club.
The reason, I go when I can, their dates fall a lot, mostly on our meeting dates.
Yeah, I know.
But it's good for the township to be, somebody.
Represent.
Represent the township, not, you know, now, if you, when new, um, members come up, or, you know, membership comes up, you know, whoever wants to become a member, we should pay for it, too, at forty-nine dollars each, if you want.
As a family.
Yeah, same household, I don't, I don't think that works.
Would be eighty dollars per trustee.
I make a motion that we pay the eighty.
Forty-nine dollars for each additional member of that.
Family household.
Same family household.
Ah, okay.
Means you have to live at the same address.
Well, what does this forty-nine dollars do for additional member of that same family household?
Just like the husband and the wife.
Well, we're all family here.
That's right.
So.
Depends on how you define family, right? But our purpose is this is a family.
I make a.
Okay, well.
We have a father and a son that live in the same.
When it comes up, we'll bring it up when anybody wants to.
I make a motion, we pay the eighty dollars for Rich Tusher's, uh, joining Alliance Club.
Well, wait, does Rich want to?
Yes.
You do want to?
Yeah, because it's.
He just said it's good to have a representative from the township there.
Okay.
Because they were, they were concerned, oh, Rich, I haven't paid, is that too quick? Or, do we get, uh, you know, room for, um, candidate, do we get the, does this mean, I said, I did quit, you know, I've never talked. So he supposedly, Scuffy supposedly dropped off at three different times memberships. And I talked to Ann, Andrew, and I talked to Marge, he never dropped anything off, neither did. All right, well, finally, Scuffy came over to my house, dropped, said he dropped one off, but it was just an envelope. I said, no, so he came there and gave me this one.
All right, so we're getting it resolved in that?
Yes.
Okay. I made the motion.
Second.
Questions concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry?
Um, so we invoice for an additional one-year subscription, one more, um, perspective magazine, we can keep in the office. Um.
Everybody gets them.
Yeah, I know, but, the reason I put this in, because.
Oh, because I asked you that one time, I.
Yeah, you, you couldn't, I couldn't find mine.
Yeah, yeah, wow, I got my answer.
Does that, well, does everybody think it's a good idea, or just forget it?
I would say we all get one.
We could get it and keep it in the office if anybody wanted to look at it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, at least one.
We could keep it on file.
Okay. And that is, uh, twenty-five dollars.
All right, I make a motion, we purchase the one-year subscription and we count the perspective for twenty-five dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry?
Okay. Uh, food pantry, Thanksgiving turkey and Christmas hams. Um, here is what we handed out last year, this is what we ordered for, um, Thanksgiving, for two fourteen.
What happened to the leftovers?
Leftovers, we, uh, put in the freezer and then we gave it to the fire departments.
Oh, that was, that was a good idea?
Yeah, well, that's what we, I do, or if, like, the field doesn't, sometimes doesn't want theirs, you know, I'll give it to, um, the woman in North Riverside, who holds a food pantry.
Well, you, you do the three suburbs, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion, we purchase the food described under E and F, uh, as according to, uh.
Give me a total.
The, the description. I don't know what the.
I think it's forty-seven.
We ordered, we ordered forty, we handed out thirty-nine.
You ordered forty and you ordered.
But how many did we have, how many recipients were there last year? Were they the same number?
There were forty-seven recipients, if you take a look on top of it.
So last year, too, I mean, this isn't just currently.
Yeah.
This was last year, okay.
So not each was.
But it's first come, first served.
Okay.
So do we need, if we hand out forty-seven meals, do we need to order forty-seven hams and forty-seven turkeys?
I, no, I don't think so, because a lot of people don't, some people don't show up. That's why, you know, we handed, last year, we handed out thirty-nine, but we ordered forty.
Uh, again, what is the criteria for getting these hams and turkeys? We went through this once before.
The same as for the food pantry, which is, you know.
They have to show what?
They, they had to show their, uh, you know, their income, and it has to be so much, which is, you know.
Okay, so it's like you're saying.
Yeah, you know, it's not just handing out every.
I know, we used to do that, so similar to the general assistance criteria, correct?
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanna know.
I make a motion that we buy.
No, I think Wayne did.
Wayne, you have a motion.
He didn't, he didn't say how many, so we need, Wayne, do, can you amend your motion to forty turkeys and forty hams?
You bet.
Done. I'll second the motion.
Questions concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Who seconded this?
I.
Thank you, John.
Roll call, Mark?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry?
Okay. Uh, holiday handouts, thinking what you want, there are several little magazines in the office, pick them out for next, go through it, Zerax, pick them out for next month. Or if you see something that you wanna order, get the prices for the amounts and all that.
Okay.
Mary, didn't you, you always seem to get those really nice little handouts, like last year, we had those jar openers.
Right, yeah.
And I don't know, you, you had ordered some other, uh, items just recently for the seniors?
Where did we hand these out?
When we had the holiday stroll here.
We, we had that, we had the holiday stroll. Um, what did I give?
Didn't you order something new?
Well, I ordered, I don't think I've ordered anything new for the seniors.
You have any ideas, because you always have really good ideas.
Well, you know, we gave, um, the jar openers to the adults, and then we ordered little stamp things.
Little stamp things for the kids.
For the kids, which they seemed to really like those.
And we should order more of those, then.
Yeah.
Because they went, I mean, they went real quickly.
Um, what I was thinking about ordering for the seniors, and I got this idea from Wayne, was a little flashlight thing, a little mag light.
That's a good idea.
That said Riverside Township on it, that they could keep in their purse and.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
So I can get a price quote on the.
Yeah, get those, and the stamps for the kids.
And get the stamps for the kids, and just give them out for the adults.
If you can't remember how many we ordered last year, talking to your Marge.
I think we ordered three hundred.
Well, we're gonna have to order a lot more than that, I'd say.
Are the little flashlights?
Four or five hundred.
Those are gonna be more expensive.
Well, for seniors.
You don't have three hundred seniors.
No.
No, I have three seniors.
I would say a hundred, a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah. For seniors.
I could order more, we could always give those away, those are wonderful, that people.
The little flashlight things?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think, um, but they're probably gonna be two dollars apiece. So, you know, if we, if we ordered four hundred of them, you know, they were turning between eight hundred and a thousand dollars.
Well, I would take order a hundred.
I don't know where I got this.
Wasn't it that, when we did that seniors thing open in the North Riverside?
Yeah, that seniors.
I got one of those, and I had one for me.
It said, the place, it did the North Riverside place.
Right.
I'll get, um, I will get prices, and then.
Yeah, and present it to the board next, because I'm sure it won't take more than a month to get.
Hit the township.
Oh, well, wait a minute.
That seniors thing, we're, we're in the third week.
I mean, you know, that, it's the beginning of December is the, uh, walk.
Yeah, it's probably like December, uh.
Seventh or something like that, yeah.
That'd be the Friday, the fourth.
No.
Um, and then.
Time is flying.
We don't.
And we do.
We don't make it the third, or, yeah.
After the chili cook-off, the year flies by.
So, um.
It does.
I would say, let's hold off on the flashlights this year.
Okay.
Let's think about it next year, because I don't think we'll have time, but those hand stamps, you know.
We'll get the hand stamps for the kids, and I'll call my friend who is in the business and see what she can come up with.
Okay.
And if we can get a flashlight for a dollar, then I'll order, but if we can't.
Yeah, but you gotta remember, we gotta have it in before.
Right, I'll, I'll talk with her.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Take both sides.
Um, uh, two thousand sixteen meeting dates and holidays. Um, their attorney, do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Your second. Any questions, concerns?
I'm just curious, did you check when the fall conference will be next year? Because it might be that second, I mean, it might be that, who knows? I mean, I don't know, it seems to be moved, it's the eighth to the tenth this year.
Do they know?
The eighth falls in like the middle of the week, I think.
Next year?
So, yeah, next year.
Because it's leap year, so-
I don't know. And I was going to try to check that, but didn't-
Oh, that's right, it's leap year next year.
Right, so that means the eighth will be on to that second Tuesday. And then election day would be the-
Okay.
It might be okay, I just, you know, I'm trying to try to check.
I'm going, okay, two thousand sixteen, uh-
Well, we know the third Tuesday is the fifteenth, right?
Yes. But, we don't know when the fall conference is going to be.
The second Tuesday, the third Tuesday-
Is the fall conference the second?
Is the fifteenth.
Tuesday.
The second Tuesday of November is the eighth.
Right, and so the first Tuesday then is the first?
First or the second?
The what?
The first. When is the, uh-
November.
November is the-
First, the first, the eighth and the fifteenth, Mary.
The first and the eighth and the fifteen. Okay, so election day is going to be the eighth.
Yep.
Because, uh, next year, so are they going to have that fall conference?
Probably not.
I don't know, election day would-
Not on the election day.
Or then go the fifteenth?
I don't, you know, I wish I had-
But then we went-
But we can't meet on the eighth either.
We can't, now, election day.
Yeah. And the other thing, uh, about this date is, how close is that to our meeting in December? Because, you know, you need those twenty days from the time you estimate the levy until you adopt it.
Well, the, December is the thirteenth.
December is the thirteenth.
So, that's fifteen, twenty-eight days.
Okay, so that would be okay, as long as you have the twenty days.
But if the meeting is the fifteenth, I mean, for those of you-
Well, we could have, we could have, on November's meeting on the first, which is the first Tuesday, and then the second Tuesday is the election.
Correct.
Third, you know, third, uh, Tuesday is the fifteenth.
You know what, do we want to table this until we get to the meeting in November?
Okay, find out what-
And then we go in the next-
Next month?
Next year's.
No, no, if you, if you contact-
What do you want me to find out now?
For your economics.
Okay, we'll just table this until we go to the meeting next.
I think you could probably call TOI tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, we have TOI, and then we'll, the meeting is.
Yeah. The thing is, you know, as I'm thinking about this, how many people usually go to the conference? So, unless three of us went, there's not going to be a problem.
Wouldn't matter.
Well, the other thing is, you could leave after lunch, the, um, the award banquet is usually Tuesday night, which is an extra ticket to go to, which sometimes we go to, sometimes we don't. You could always leave after lunch and then be back in time for the meeting, but-
No, that's too much.
Um, you know, just, you know, we have the election day in there and all that, so why don't we just find out when the meeting is and then we can go from there.
And just-
Okay, a point of order here, I made the motion, was that seconded?
I seconded, but I withdraw my second.
And these are coming under questions or concerns.
Right, we're having discussion.
All right.
We're under discussion.
So, what are we going to do, vote no on this thing?
No, withdraw your motion, because we haven't-
No, we can vote no on it, you know.
We can vote no?
That's what he said.
No, we can vote no on it.
I don't know.
That's what we did with the other one.
Vote no, let's vote no.
Just vote no.
All right, vote, okay.
Just check it out.
Roll call.
Side next to us. Trustee Clark?
No.
Trustee Erthler?
No.
Trustee Giesman?
No.
Trustee Kibitsky?
No.
Supervisor Tusher?
No.
Motion, let them carry.
Okay. Okay. And, pick your, you know, you know, there's stuff under FYI, any questions? Reveal it. The only thing that would be, would be, you know, I got that thing from African American Contractors Association, November twelfth, again, get it every year, but I think I could put it in, because I know, you had thought about going at one point. I had gone years ago.
Yeah.
I didn't see any benefits to it, so.
You know, are you done with that?
Yeah.
Um, this stuff about the insurance, and it's great that they're getting a reduction. I, I, I see that the last time we approved the eighty-twenty split on it was in two thousand thirteen. I think it's not a bad thing to do that every year, to reaffirm that that's what the township wants to do, is, you know, pay X, so, and the employee pays Y. I, I, I don't, does anybody have a problem with that?
How long is this good for, from two thousand thirteen, until it's changed again?
You know, that's the, the thing, uh, with some of this, can you say? It just says, motion was made and seconded at effect of November first, township will pay eighty percent, employees will pay twenty percent of their health insurance. It doesn't say forever or indefinitely, you could look at it that way.
When I, when I, when I worked, you know, for the, for the state, and when I worked on the trading board, all this insurance, they didn't vote every year how much they were going to pay, they only voted when there was a change.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, they didn't say every year, well, we're going to pay this, they're going to pay this. If it changed, you were notified, they voted and you were notified. So, I don't know.
I don't, I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing, and some of the things that we've had as policies, especially, this year isn't necessarily that big a deal, but maybe next year, because the following year will be an election year, um, we may not all be on this board after whatever the date of the election is in two thousand seventeen. There, if somebody's looking at records, do they have to go back six years to find out what was the policy on something?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure that's the best thing on earth.
I've seen it done this way, where it wasn't changing, the public sector and the private sector, she had both. So, I, I don't know, I mean, if you want to set something up to do that, fine, but I'm just saying I've never heard of that. The only time it was brought up for vote is when the, when the amounts changed. You know, I don't care, whatever you want to do.
No, I'm, it's, just a point that-
I understand.
My feeling, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I don't think it's bad, I don't think it's wrong, um, is it necessary? Well, I'll tell you, if I were looking at records, I'd rather be able to look at one year than to have to go back through all the, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think it's good to have it come up every year. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, just to reaffirm, I mean, that that's, I'm not suggesting we do anything different, I'm fine, I'm fine with it, it's just, um-
Can't you put in a notice to bring this up at the next meeting?
But put it on the agenda for next month.
Have for the agenda next month, that's, if you feel that strongly about it.
Sure.
Okay?
Right.
Okay, let's go on with the warrants and whatever.
Okay.
Okay, Anne?
All right. Here, Wayne, if you want to sign those and pass them around. Okay, first, a motion that the board approve and ratify payment of bills identified on the general war in October two thousand fifteen, in the amount of thirteen thousand, thirty-eight dollars, eight cents, as presented to the board this thirteenth day of October, two thousand fifteen.
Second the motion.
Any questions, concerns?
What was that?
Open the file.
No, 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 no. Any questions or concerns? Hearing non-oral call.
Trustee Clark?
Yeah.
Trustee Erthler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion, carry.
There you go.
Okay, next, a motion that the board ratify and approve payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant, October two thousand fifteen, in the amount of eight hundred, eighty-one dollars, sixteen cents, payroll warrant, October two thousand fifteen, in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred, fifty-three dollars, health warrant, October two thousand fifteen, in the amount of one thousand, six hundred, thirty dollars, thirty-eight cents, monthly filings, October two thousand fifteen, in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred, thirty-nine dollars, eighty-one cents, grants, October two thousand fifteen, in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred, ten dollars, general assistance warrant, October two thousand fifteen, in the amount of nine hundred dollars, township radio player warrant, October two thousand fifteen, in the amount of one hundred, twenty dollars, and food pantry warrant, October two thousand fifteen, in the amount of five hundred, seventeen dollars, seventy-six cents, all of the above is presented to board this thirteenth day of October, two thousand fifteen.
Second the motion.
I second.
I did, all right.
Questions, concerns? Hearing non-oral call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Erthler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion, carry.
Lady Dan?
Uh, as far as warrants, but I do have a comment on the financial statements.
Okay.
Um, on the statement of expenditures under the general town fund for the administrative division, um, under personnel services, IMRF, we have, uh, this month we spent roughly thirty-one hundred dollars in that account line item. We have seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars left. If, we are at six months into the year, that is not going to be enough money. Maybe it'll be enough for the next two months, but beyond that, it will be short, so, maybe,